foreseeable future unless majority, you know, council wants to change that, so.
I'd like to say something about our town here, our little city. Our little city is chopped up and since they put in these new zones in here, like eight and five, that's the zones that are, that go to Washington and forty-five and seventy-eight, which goes downstate. These are, we got all new, all new people in there as far as politicians. Now, I think what you should do, Mayor, seriously, I, I believe you should get a hold of all them people that, that come, come officials together to at least introduce them to Wooddale. They chopped Wooddale all up. One side of Central is in five and the other side of Central is in eight and that's what they done to it. So, they did it on purpose. Yes. All right, Mayor.
Just so you know, I've already spoken to the new Congresswoman and she says she's eager to help us out. We'll see. I've spoken to the new Senator and I've, I've already reached out. There's only one state rep I haven't been able to get a hold of yet and I don't think they wanna, mightn't wanna talk to us, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have one other item for the next meeting, if it's fine. There's a technical change to the state law regarding retail theft and I believe it's solicitation of a sexual act that affects our impound ordinance. All this would be is a cleanup, to just change the reference. Right now it references a certain part of the Illinois compiled statutes. This would just reference what it, how it's now numbered under Illinois compiled statutes. It wouldn't change anything, but we do need to pass an ordinance to make sure we're referencing the right state law.
Okay. I, I, I'm making adjournment? Make a motion for adjournment? What?
I have one other item that I'd like to, and I don't know if it will fall under public health and safety. I did get saying, some phone calls about one of our polling places being in a school. Several phone calls. I don't know how, where that will fall under, where we would have that discussion, or maybe Mr. Pat Bond can handle that. We have one of our voting place that I know and I thought they were all removed out of schools and I found out there's still some in schools. Is there a way or how we could move that because there was several complaints about that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I will suggest to the, to the Election Commission, let me know which school it is, that the, under state law, the Illinois Election Code authorizes the election jurisdiction to designate public facilities as polling places. They generally do it in connection, Westview School, I understand. They generally do that in connection with the handicap accessibility. Schools generally have ample parking, accessibility. There's been a movement afoot to try and have the schools closed. They do have that option. They've not elected to take that. There was a state statute briefly on the books that mandated the closure of schools on Election Day for other reasons, safety reasons. You've got, you know, people coming into, adults coming into school with kids and the potential risk there and the schools opted for an amendment to that, that section that gave them the option to close, but did not mandate that to close. It's an ongoing battle and discussion. I will let them know that there's been some concerns with Westview School, but it's, it's difficult to move it from a school because they are generally centrally located. As I said, they've got handicap accessibility. They're suited for people, you know, public coming in and out. They've got ample parking in there generally in locations that have good access. So, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing. The city unfortunately, under the municipal code, has no legal authority to either, nor does the school district, by the way, to prevent that from happening. But to the extent that there are some problems and concerns, I will share those and, and, you know, offer a suggestion that that, another location in this area be looked at for that purpose.
Mike?
If you could, you could offer them the Park District too. We also have a huge gymnasium that they could shut down for one day.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, Pat. I think we all know we're talking about Westview and I worked that all day. As far as the handicap accessibility, it's probably the longest walk for anybody from the parking lot to get into the building, so it really isn't that accessible. And as far as parking, it has the least amount of parking spaces available. After the teachers and staff fill up the parking lot in the morning, there's really not that much left and they have to park all the way on the other side of the lot. I mean, it really is a long walk. A lot of the elderly people or, or people that had mobility issues were really upset about it. So, I heard it all day. Eugene got some phone calls, but I was there all day and everyone that came in and expressed the same thing.
Oh. Pass it to the mayor. To, to the, to the mayor. Oh. Yes?
I just wanted to pass along that for the last several elections, we have been posting a police officer in the school, just for everyone, so everyone's aware of it. One of our regular on duties, we've been working with the schools to make sure we have someone in Westview. It's not perfect, but at least we do have a presence over there, so.
I'll confirm that.
Okay. Yes, okay.
In light of the concerns, the handicap accessibility concerns, those are significant and I, and there is a meeting of the Election Commission tomorrow. I will suggest, let them know and they'll, they've got a team that looks into it. They have to comply with federal requirements and they measure and so forth, so I'll have them go out and do their due diligence on that and maybe suggest they move it to the Park District and I'll give a report back to Mr. Murmice.
Or if they could team, I mean, we've had it at Maple Meadows before. I mean, I know that we probably teamed up, but I, I, I thought, and I usually work the polls, is, is I thought that we handled that pretty well. I mean, I know they had it at Georgetown before and that didn't necessarily work out because of parking issues, but Maple Meadows seemed to work out and everybody that came to Westview said, why don't we have it there? So, it was.
Anybody else? I made a motion for adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, you're, Eugene.
Call the Public Works Committee, make the minutes taken off, the same people are present, I need your motion approved, the minutes, April, I mean, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. That is my motion.
Second.
Concerns, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Uh, next item is Woodside Pond testing results.
Who's taking the lead on this one?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmice.
As, as the council knows, we have previously discussed this. At a recent committee meeting, we did have some kind gentlemen from Woodside, from representing Woodside Homeowners Association come in and talk about some of the issues they were having with their ponds. I know they're here again today. The council direction was to go back and look at the ponds, test the ponds to see if there was any responsibility by contractors that had done work in the area or any responsibility for the city to help clean these, clean these ponds and the problem, and correct some of the problems that are, are being had in these ponds. So, staff did work. We reached out to H.R. Green and they worked with their testing company to test the site. The results were included in the packet. Mr. Hardy here from H.R. Green, he could maybe speak to the study more so than I can, so I'm gonna have Mark come on up and kinda give a Cliff Notes version of the study and then we'll go from there with what the council wants to do moving forward.
The, we took some samples at, at the pond and also out in the system along Duckworth and Central to where some of the recent construction activities were and the intent was to see if there was a match per se or matching fingerprints between what was at the pond and what was out in the system. And our testing showed that there was not a, a close match. It was inconclusive. The, what was in the pond was, was more clay and, and silt and more black, organic type of material. What, what was along Central was more of sand and gravel, so there wasn't a, a close match there. So, the, um, there's some things contributing to how that sediment gets there and one of the things that out, that we outlined in our report was with the improvements along, am I saying the street right?
Deer Path.
Deer Path, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke there. But the improvements along Deer Path where a new storm sewer was installed, whereas a ditch with culverts was more of a, a rural setting, was improved to a, an urban setting with culverts, which takes the runoff from the forest preserve and, and gets it to those ponds more quickly. So, there's not as many opportunities for that sediment to, to settle out and I think that may be contributing to maybe an increase in the sediment that's getting to the ponds.
Okay. Next?
Well, I mean, so in summary, it's, it's more of possibly the overall system improvements in the area, kinda speeding up the conveyance system, but as a direct result from actual construction projects, there's really nothing conclusive to that. So, staff's looking for some direction as to where we wanna go with this.
Okay.
The, that pond now, are you saying that's gonna start getting more water into it because of the improvements?
It's, I'm saying there's less opportunity for sediment to settle out prior to it getting there. So, it's, it's gonna, the runoff is gonna, from the forest preserve, there's a more opportunity for sediment to get washed up in the flow, carried along the pipe and dropped in the pond due to the, I guess, improved design of, of the storm sewer conveyance system.
So, that detention pond start getting dirtier because of that?
Well, it, it all, it depends on the, the nature and the frequency and the intensity of the rainfalls.
I mean, we could never judge that, but I mean.
It, it is what the pond is there to do. It's, it's a wide spot in the road to slow the water down, you know, contain it and then let it drain out slowly and, and that's essentially what it's doing.
Okay. I don't know if you answered my question, but is it, is it actually going to get more sediment now because of the improvements?
Yeah, that's probably, yeah.
Now, how important now does that detention pond become to the city?
Well, it's, again, it's, it's doing its, its job to, to, you know, prevent gully washers downstream of that pond and, and it allows it to capture, hold it and then bleed it out more slowly.
Okay. So, it does become pretty important now, since?
Yeah, there's, there's, you know, code that requires when new construction that these detention ponds are, are built to, to do that purpose.
Okay. Um, thank you. Is there anything we could do with the water coming out of the forest preserve that, what you're saying is carrying most of the sediment and bringing that into the new sewer system and conveying that? Could there, is there vegetation, some restructuring, redirecting and then, in some, some way, shape or form, filtering that water before it gets into the convey, new conveyance system going to the pond to help alleviate that issue?
Yeah, there's, there's definitely, I mean, it could be as simple as, as some grading at the inlet of it, up, up near the corner of Deer Path and Central where there, where it first enters. It could be, some of that could be done as well as right at the entrance to the pond. There's, there is some improvements that could be done to, to slow things down there too.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Frank?
Jeff, can we give, you know, instruction or direction as to look into doing something like that?
Yeah, I was, I was just talking to Lou about that and we can look into that, most certainly.
Okay. And I'd, I'd also think that at this time, maybe we should help at least this time in helping clean the sediment that's in that pond. And what does it normally cost to do that? And the only reason I'm saying that is because of the construction.
Does anyone have a price tag on it?
We just received, well, we received a quote, it was probably about four months ago, and that quote was between fifty to twenty thousand dollars to remove the sediment from the North Pond and that was just the North Pond section.
Did you say fifty to twenty?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen, twenty?
Yeah.
Wait, I, I believe Attorney wants.
Yeah, I, I would just, sure. I would just caution you that if, in, if I understand the report from the engineering firm that did the testing, there was no match for the sand or gravel, which would have been the result of the road improvements. Is that what your findings were?
Correct. There's no conclusive evidence.
So, I mean, I would, I would caution the, the council, while you want to assist in, in addressing the problem, to the extent that what was found was clay, silt and organic material, which is, is all that, all that the, the improvements of the system have done is conveyed those down there. You have to be cautious that it is still a, a private pond and the, the city has limited authority with respect to private ponds and streets, which we'll talk about shortly. If the city contributed to it, not simply the conveyance is contributing to it, but if the cities, we prod, you know, work project, road improvement project contributed it, my opinion is the city then has an obligation to remediate that situation. If the city did not, if, if, if the, the additional material that's accumulating there is not a result of something, some act the city took other than improving the system and as I understand it, the system improvement is simply taking that from the forest preserve and conveying it down there quicker so the, the sediment's building up, that, that, you know, you, you have to be careful using public funds for what could be construed as a purely private purpose. Although there is a benefit to the city of, of having that function properly, I certainly recognize that.
Are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
I, I agree with the, the city attorney as far as where we direct the funds.
If I could just have that for the record, I would.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't happen often. But as I read the report, I mean, there is some cause and effect here and, and we could argue the finer nuances, whether it's a re-engineering design that caused it a faster conveyance. We eliminated the natural filter system. The long and short of it is it, it, it's doing something now with all the new infrastructure and road improvements and sewer improvements that it didn't do before, you know, and before this becomes a long, drawn-out, protracted legal battle and the city does re-benefit from these ponds functioning properly. I mean, we really do have to look at possibly doing something. I mean, I don't know what that something is. We certainly have to look into some modifications in filtering as we talked just briefly a little while ago about redirecting, slowing down, filtering, whatever, to lessen the impact of that. And then, you know, the side issue of, you know, what, what do we do for the cleanout? You know, I, I don't know. That's, that's a little discussion too, but I, I certainly see the argument that can be made that we're certainly part of the problem.
Okay.
Jeff?
Staff certainly has direction on looking at slowing down the conveyance system, but we're still looking for some direction on, do we wanna do some type of cost sharing? I'm sure Attorney Bond could release us of any liability or any implied legal problems out there. Does the council wanna do any cost sharing with this?
Frank? Go, go ahead. You got the floor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to see us help.
How much?
So, yeah, make a motion?
How much you looking? Make the motion and see how much. Make the motion.
Well, I'd like to make the motion then to help with the Woodside Pond sediment. And, and I don't know exactly what that cost would be and what that amount is, so, and that would be due to the construction.
Why, we gotta put a dollar amount to it?
Well, I, what kind of, you know, can we put five thousand? Five thousand dollar amount on this? Okay, I'd like to make the motion to, to help with the five thousand dollars on helping clean the, the Woodside Pond.
Do I have a second on that motion? Little second?
Little second, okay.
Motion fails. Pat Bond, you have something?
If the motion, I was gonna enter in the discussion, I mean, we would have to have certainly some, you know, it would be a cost sharing agreement, there'd have to be some release of any liability, we'd have to have access to the pond and so forth, but in light of the fact that there is, that motion failed, that's, that's not necessary at this juncture.
Mr. Woods?
Well, that was some of the questions I wanted to ask you if there were some more that we needed to add to that motion other than we just wanna give somebody five thousand dollars. While I said I don't mind helping, I, I do agree with the, you know, we can't just go around doing work on private property. So, is there a way that we should mention that or add some more language in that it's in an effort to negate issues that arose out of the construction project or something like that?
Yeah, my suggestion to a, a motion would be something that would say, to the extent that there is a public benefit to the city assisting in the cost share arrangement for the removal of the sediment at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars, provided the, there's a access, the city's allowed access to the pond and that the city is released from any and all further liability and responsibility with respect to the sediment. And if it comes up again, it has to come up under a separate issue. I think that might be appropriate.
Mr. Woods?
I'll make the motion as stated by Attorney Bond.
Mr. Bond?
I'll second.
You have a second? Questions? I'm with Roy Wesley.
Questions to the engineer. Your reports, well, I guess it's to Jeff, the city manager and Lou too. We sat here and seen those pictures that were going into that pond. I can't believe that nothing would show up in that. I mean, it just doesn't disappear. Lou, you see those pictures there?
Lou, before you answer, Mayor wants to say something.
Just before Lou answers, the reason we didn't ask Baxter and Woodman to do the testing because since they were involved, that's why we got separate outside firm and, you know, I mean, that's.
Okay, I guess it goes to the guy.
What's your name again?
Mark. Mark Hardy with H.R. Green.
I know H.R. Green, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
The, um, yes, there's, there's several, I agree, I was at the, at the presentation that night and I saw some of the pictures and I don't disagree with you that, that they made a, a pretty good case with, with what they saw and how they portrayed it. However, I guess just from an engineering standpoint and with our geotechnical firm came up with the plan to, to, to match, to match the two soil samples and, and our tests that we did didn't show that, that matched up. There's other, there's other ways that sediment and whatnot gets into that pond with sheet flow across the yards and, and just there locally, but also with how it gets into the storm inlets from the other areas and, and how it comes in, there's, there's a lot of ways for sediment and things to get to those ponds other than from the construction projects, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Good. Well, he's busy talking, so I'm gonna go.
Go ahead, Pat.
Could we, in our, when they do road projects, they're supposed to cover these sewers and stuff. We know that some of that settlement did get to that, we've seen the pictures.
I, I don't, I think the, the engineering report was that it didn't, that that sediment would have been sand and gravel had it been from the construction project and they found no evidence from a geotechnical standpoint of sand and gravel.
Even though that, if you want, don't, don't wanna say that, what I'm saying here, we have a policy that they're supposed to cover those sewers with the catch base. That was not done. There was, there was days that it wasn't done. I've, I've seen, it was filled, if you wanna say it's filled, it was some of the days it wasn't. My point is, can't we throw some of this back to the contractor?
Mr. Pat Bond?
Yeah, I certainly could look at the contract and, and talk to the engineer about, you know, the field notes and so forth to see what occurred. I think it would be difficult though, to be honest with you, because of the finding of R.J. Green, that, that material, while perhaps the contractor omitted to do that on occasion, it didn't, does not appear from the engineering testing that the materials from that construction project were the cause of this increase in the sediment. So, while you could, you know, we could look into that, but I'm not sure that that's going to, based on the evidence we have here, that that would, would prevail.
I, I think that we should try to get them to pay something on this.
Mr. Woods?
Get him up.
I'm probably gonna echo just what, uh, City Attorney just said. Given the fact, that's twice, I know.
That's twice now, you're slipping there.
Given the, the report that's out there, I mean, there's, there's no really way to, to peg that contractor and any other issues would then become design issues of, and they don't design it, so, I mean, it's gonna be a circular argument that we're all gonna spend money on to, to argue and wind up where we all know we're gonna wind up and that's, I'm not paying anything. So, I don't know if we wanna, I guess we could make the phone call and see if they're gonna offer, but I wouldn't waste too much legal time on, on, on fighting that. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, going back to what we talked about earlier, then I would just get complaints from all of them and shocky if we, we started talking to Pat about this 'cause it's, it's gonna go nowhere.
Let's, we have a motion, we have a second. Do a rock, roll call vote on this, please.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman, Zara?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Uh, item number five, report on recommendation, snow and ice contract MFT bids. Uh, let me get it here. Hang on a minute. It's here, it's here, I got it. All right, um, the bid, who's taking this one? Okay, go ahead.
The city, the city received bids on November 6th for road de-icing salt. This year, the city chose to go through a process with IDOT for be able to expend motor fuel tax funds to be able to purchase the salt. We received three bidders. The low bidder was that of a North American Salt Company, however, they were not a responsive bidder. They did not include in their bid all the material that was requested in the proposal. Therefore, we are recommending a reward, an award of the contract to the second lowest bidder, who was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Morton Salt Company. Morton Salt price is fifty-two twenty-four a ton for a total amount of sixty-seven nine twelve for the year. I guess one note to make is, the city decided to bid this project out, their price is substantially lower than the quote that we were given without competitive bidding, to the tune of about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars lower. So it was a good move on the city's part to bid the project out financially.
Okay. I, I have one question. So you're trying to tell me all these other bidders had submitted the right documents?
The, uh, there were three bidders, two of them submitted the documents correctly, one did not produce, uh, they basically put a note on their proposal saying they could not provide a color additive, Prussian blue color additive that was requested in the, in the contract documents. So, so really, they weren't responsive at that point, they couldn't provide the product that you asked for.
So that was the only thing that they didn't have in their?
Yeah, that they didn't have, that they don't, well, it was-
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at behalf of the city because we've been down this route, we didn't take the little bidder, and the guy comes back and says, oh, no, I had it in there, award of contract someone else, oh, I'm, I, just, mayor?
Lou, I'm, I'm sure you guys did, but I'm gonna ask anyways. If normally we buy so mu, so many tons, I'm sure we took into consideration what we had left over and we put the bid out, we put, we bid for less, correct?
We did.
Than we normally do?
Yes, sir, we checked with Public Works, worked with Mark Thiede over there, determined the amount of salt to bid out, and it took into account your reserves currently, yes, sir.
Just want to make sure, sometimes it's an automatic idea.
Okay, so I'll obtain, I'll obtain a motion toward the salt contract, the Morton Salt Corporation of Chicago, Illinois, net to the seed sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and zero cents, and using NFT funds, am I correct? Go ahead.
That's correct, and just a, a note, we only have to purchase eighty percent of that contract amount, so if it doesn't snow a lot, we'll-
What?
Yes, you're right, MFT funds, yes.
We're gonna award it not to exceed-
We're gonna award it for that amount, correct.
This amount.
But we may only spend eighty percent of that.
Mr. Pat Bond?
Perhaps if you'd amend your motion to say to Morton Salt as the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay, would you make that lowest responsive? All right, so that is my, uh, motion, do I have a second on motion?
Second.
Comments? All in favor? Aye. Polls? Motion carries. Item number six, report on recognition, recognition for private street responsibility. Who's taking the lead in this one? Mr. Murmurs. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was having an iPad malfunction, I apologize.
Nick?
Throughout the course of the two thousand twelve, uh, street and sidewalk resurfacing program, there was a number of questions that staff yielded about certain streets in town and whether they were public or private and what we could do to improve or replace those streets altogether. Staff notified the council that we would be getting back to you at a future committee date, outlining all those streets that are private within the city and what it would cost to either repair or replace those streets. Some of these streets were incorporated into our annual street, not annual, but our street sufficiency study, which we update every couple of years, they were included in there, but they've never been funded in a CIP via the fact that they're private. So we do have some rough ballpark numbers, uh, the attorney's here as well, he can explain what we would need to do legally to be able to repair these streets or, or replace them. Included in the packet, as I stated before, is a map with a GIS map with locations of streets, lengths of streets, and costs associated with those streets, to the best of our knowledge in our past, uh, street sufficiency study. Um, I also included a, a map of all the private ponds in the packet as well, as that's kind of a, somewhat of a branch off from the streets, but the main question was the streets. So that being said, staff's looking for some direction. Do we want to go down the road of, of repairing or reconstructing these streets? Since the council did ask for the information, that's-
Let me, let me just add on to this. Some of these streets that were private, we plowed for the whole year, and we still plow them. Okay? So I'm assuming when we started plowing those streets, I assume that those streets were ours. Okay?
That's exactly why he's here tonight.
So, okay, Mr. Pat Bond, I will give you the floor and discuss that.
Thank you very much, there's two, uh, two, um, types of categories of streets, those that we maintain, plow and so forth, and we got some where we plow, some where we maintain, some we do both. Uh, some of those are done under agreements with private developers, previous administrations entered into these agreements, they are terminable by action of the city council, there's generally a, uh, a payment made initially for that to be done, it's far less than the actual cost of doing so. And we've had discussions about whether you want to continue those agreements or terminate those agreements, that's one category, the other category are simply those private streets where the city has historically plowed those or maintained those. The issue that you have is, uh, those are not city streets, they're not public streets, they are private streets, and the, uh, the fact that the city has undertaken certain plowing and/or maintenance of those streets does not make them public streets. The private residents have benefited from those and those residents may actually be, you know, are incorporated in the city, so they're residents of the city, but they, there is no obligation on the city, simply because they've maintained those, to then be responsible for all, uh, maintenance of those streets, to be financially responsible, legally responsible, and any liability to attach to that. But there's a caution, because the old saying, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, looks like a duck, it's a duck. And so to the extent that, you know, everybody sees the city maintaining those streets, they're gonna expect that they're going to be maintained to the quality standards the city is maintaining its other roadways and streets. And, uh, and so the natural assumption from the homeowners or the residents is that it is a city street. And I think that's what staff's looking for is, if they're going to be city streets, there's ways of making those actually city streets. There's three different, uh, alternatives. One is you get the property owners to dedicate the streets to the city and the city accept that dedication, they become city streets. The other is if they're, uh, if they're, they're interested, and I don't know if the city would be interested in acquiring those, but you could purchase those streets from the private homeowners, and those are generally in subdivisions. The third option is through eminent domain, you could condemn those streets and make those street city streets. The thing you should consider is, and I think the street sufficiency study would be a helpful guide, is, are these streets in a condition, because you've, 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 they were private streets for a reason. They were private streets because private development initially wanted them private streets, because they were able to have not the same standards that the city streets. For example, the road right of way is, 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 uh, reduced as a result of that. That allowed the private developer to put perhaps more grassy area on that street for his private development. You have to understand, the private developer is not gonna live there, after they build a development, they leave. So the homeowners have an expectation that there, this is a street, cities generally maintain streets, so it's a city street. But there were reasons it was done in the way that it was, and so what there's, I think staff is inquiring is, is there going to be a shift in the mindset of the, of the city and are we going to undertake the, uh, the maintenance of those, or undertake the responsibility for those streets, the full responsibility? And if that is the case, then legally, my recommendation is we make those city streets and those, one of those three, uh, methods of doing so has to be employed in order to have that happen. But in making that determination, there's a legal way of doing it, but there's a policy decision that has to be made first, and that is, do you as a council wish to do that? And if so, you have to recognize the financial undertaking that you've got, and you also have to recognize, you know, how do you prioritize, where do you go first? And, and generally, what the homeowners are looking for is worst first, they want their streets taken care of. So, you know, you may have a scramble for people to say, hey, I want the city to take over my private street and to unload, because right now, they've got, you know, responsibility for the maintenance of it legally, the city does not.
Okay.
I'm Roy Wesley.
And to respond to what you just said, if the street is falling apart and it just goes to all gravel, then it comes on the property maintenance of those people that own the street, correct?
That is correct.
So they would have to repair their street. Okay.
That's correct.
Let me give an example here. This Homestead. There's a property there, there's, the house is built on Wooddale Road and a drive is on Homestead. That's a private street. But the city of Wooddale gave a permit to that guy to build a house, even though half of that street belongs to that homeowner, the other half does not. So in return, the city gave permission, or to get into his property, he would have to go on the private street to get into his property. So the city gave permission to build this house, not of that owner owning the full street. So you follow what I'm saying on this, Mr. Bond, because on the other side of the street, the half of that property would be the other side.
Mr. Pat Bond, or someone, can I take that?
I, I need a little more information, the law does not allow property to be landlocked, so I would suspect that there is an easement, uh, over that, uh, private street. Would be, uh, you know, I, I, just because-
Well, we'll get that answer right now, because we have our famous John Forrest to give us the information.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have reviewed the plat book and the survey on that property, and when that home was built, they did dedicate, I believe it's fifteen feet of their property to the city of Wooddale. So we actually own, I think about one-eighth of Homestead Drive has been actually dedicated to the city as part of a public street.
Could I go in with that?
I'm Roy Wesley.
So if you own one-eighth, the city owns one-eighth of that street, how do you get your car in and out of that one-eighth?
Well, I think that goes back to what the city attorney has said, you can't allow a piece of property to be landlocked, you have to allow access into it. Homestead Drive is kind of an unusual one, because Homestead Drive is basically a glorified driveway, is what it was put in for. I mean, I believe Homestead Drive in the plat book or on the surveys is referred to as a driveway easement to serve those properties there.
So is there agreement with the easement in there for the city to come in there with their garbage trucks and everything else to go down that street?
I would have to check on that.
Okay, Mr. Pat Bond?
Yeah, they, if there isn't, uh, an easement or another agreement, there is what's called a prescriptive easement for those types of services, and that would also extend to the other parcel that was being purchased. What a prescriptive easement is, if there's not a formal easement, prescriptive easement allows for there to be, uh, access by, by operation of practicality, really. So you don't, it's not landlocked, you can't have it landlocked, so, uh, I, I don't know, I could look at the documents themselves to see if there's actually a formal easement, but to the extent there isn't, there's still authorization for city trucks, fire trucks, police vehicles, garbage vehicles and so forth to access that property.
Really not helping me here.
Okay.
I can only help one alderman at a time, and tonight's Alderman Woods' turn, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, the list of eight streets, I'm either not clear on the criteria that put them there or it's not complete. So if we're looking at streets that are not owned by the city, that's the intent of this, correct? So like Dominion Drive would be one and it's not on here, St. Andrews Court, Dominion Court, like, there's a whole subdivision that's not on here.
Sorry, but I wasn't aware that those streets, uh, weren't on, that those are private streets, Dominion Drive?
Yes.
Okay, Dominion Drive, yes. Jeff?
Just so the council understands too, the, the price on here, that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's just a basically temporary fix, it won't bring the streets up to proper city compliance or anything like that, or reconstruct them, this would be a quick fix. If you want to actually do everything you need to do, it'd probably be a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars down the road. At a minimum.
And, and then a follow-up, if you don't mind?
Okay, I, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, so then a hundred and twenty-five to quick fix streets, but then, are we looking at putting them in a program to then start resurfacing, reconstruction, plowing, et cetera?
Well, that's what I mean, if you're looking to do that, it's gonna significantly raise the price upwards of five hundred thousand at a minimum, probably up to a million to get these streets up to where they need to be in the long run. So that's added to the CIP down the road.
Okay. Mr. Pep?
One of the things, because once you do take those over by any one of those three, uh, methods, then the city is now, A, fully responsible for those, you can't shirk your responsibility, they're going to be, they have to be maintained in the same fashion and at the same standards as other city streets. So once you undertake that obligation, you, you're in for the long haul and you're, you're going to have to maintain those streets, which may not have been built initially to city standards for, you know, width and so forth, there, those will have to be, uh, brought up to, I mean, the quick fix is one thing, but you have an obligation now, because it is a city street, just like all the other city streets, and you're going to, uh, have that maintenance and also all the snow removal and everything else on those streets that you elect to, uh, accept, whether by dedication or by acquisition, and you've got that obligation for the, into perpetuity.
The mayor, the mayor, please.
Pat, just so I, I am clear. I think the street has to be sixty-six feet wide, is that correct, Lou?
That necessary? Right of way, sir, yeah.
Correct. So some of these streets might be fifteen to twenty feet shy of that. So you're telling us if we take them over, we, wait, let me finish a question. We would have to extend that fifteen feet, because in some of these areas, basically the sidewalks, basically not even three feet wide, and then they got less than eight feet of grass before their front door. You're gonna be right on top of these people's houses if you do that, is that, is that, do I understand that right?
Yes, I, I mean, if you're going to maintain a public sidewalk through these properties, you're gonna want it to meet ADA accessibility, so you're looking at four feet with five feet in some spaces wide. You're gonna want the street to be passable for your city fire trucks, uh, you know, so if a fire truck's on one side, it has to be passable for the other side, so the road might need to be widened in that case. So, yeah, those are issues we encounter.
Oh, we don't always have to put sidewalks into that location.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pat Bond?
He, he addressed the mayor's inquiry.
I don't know who to address this to, but, um, this quick fix, can we do this quick fix on these streets without actually owning them?
I'm sorry, without extra?
Owning them.
Without actually owning them?
Well, if you do, you have to do it with the concurrence of those who do own it. So we'd have to get, uh, an access agreement to those homeowners who have a right to the street. We'd have to get a, a temporary construction easement to allow us to do the construction on the, on the property. And we'd also have to get a release and waiver from the, from the property owners so that, you know, we're not undertaking, if we do do the quick fix, we're not undertaking a, a long-term obligation. But once you go in there- But once you go in there, you know, in for a penny, in for a pound type of thing.
Okay. So long and short, we could, with all these terms that you just said.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Woods?
How do we justify that, doing work on private property again? I mean, in the other case, we had a kind of cause and effect thing. I mean, there's some argument in just saying the word court would have cost us that much money. So in this case, we're talking on taking on eight more streets. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but then also Alderman Winger brought up, we haven't put Dominion on there either, and I'm sure maybe we might even have missed one or two others. So how do we justify that?
Yeah, and that really is the key, because the municipal code, section five-eight-one-dish-two, says it prohibits employing public resources on a private property or for private use. The Illinois Constitution specifically only authorizes public funds to be used for a public purpose. There was a case, O'Fallon Development Corporation versus the city of O'Fallon, and it said in that one, they were actually using the public funds for a private roadway. And the Illinois Constitution says a public purpose is the residents in general, the municipality must benefit from the actions of the city. And I think with the situation we had with the pond, there was some discussion from the engineer that that would impact the, you know, downstream. And so there's some justification for that. In this instance, there'd have to be a determination that somehow these streets were a benefit to the residents generally of the city of Wooddale. And some of these roads, the street that was just discussed, for example, that services three homes, I think that would be a very difficult argument to make, that somehow the residents were benefiting. And I think in that instance, the criticism would be, and the legal prohibition would be, that you would be using public funds to benefit, while they are residents, you can't benefit particular residents. You have to benefit the residents as a whole. So that would be an improper use of public funds for what would be essentially a private purpose.
You have a follow-up there?
Yeah. So, given that, the only way to do anything is we would have to do one of the methods you said. Either have them deed over the streets. We certainly don't want to pay for them. And then we have the issue of, can we actually get a legal street in there? And that I'm sure, along with not having a legal street, becomes other legal issues. Not being able to get fire trucks down, or you can get them down, or if there's obstructions, we built an improper street, there's potential issues down the road. So maybe we need to look at this a little harder.
Okay. Is it? Mayor Police?
Besides the streets, next we're gonna talk about ponds. So, I mean, if we can't say we're just gonna do the streets, because then all the owners of the ponds are gonna come forward, right? It's not like we can pick and choose.
Mr. Bonn?
Right. And the legal analysis is the same. If it's, if the pond has some regional benefits, that's one thing, and that would be an appropriate utilization of public funds. If it simply benefits a small portion of the city, then the argument or the legal analysis is the same as the roadway we just spoke of. And that is that there's a prohibition, both in the municipal code and the Illinois Constitution, for utilizing public funds for that purpose.
Mayor Police?
I have a follow-up. I mean, we do have a strategic session that's gonna be coming up soon. Eventually, when we start CIP and everything, I mean, that might be the place to discuss it. As long what Alderman Woods was saying.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I would echo what the mayor said, but just add that I could probably make a stronger case for the retention ponds and detention ponds, being all the flooding issues in this city. That would be certainly an easier one to make than a street that services three houses. Although I am, I would like us to see, us do something to clarify what it is the city does and doesn't do on these streets, or if we do take them, or don't take them. Thank you.
Okay. My question now is, are we gonna continue to plow these streets? Knowing that they are private streets, and my question is, are we gonna do more damage to the streets, and then we got them coming to us and saying we did damage to their streets? More damage. Mr. Woods?
I would say we have to continue. We have.
That's fine. I have no problem.
Unless somebody's gonna disagree.
Nope.
I hate to ruin my perfect record for the evening, but, you know, you just have to be cautious, and that's a policy decision you have. But I think as the chairman Wesley indicated, if you're plowing them, and they say the plowing has caused some deterioration of the streets, then the action of the city has resulted in some damage to private property, which is no different than, let's say, a plow hits a mailbox. We would replace that mailbox or fix that mailbox. So, you know, I know that it's been done in the past, and I think we had a couple where we actually notified, Jeff, I can't recall, but I thought we had some discussion where we notified the owners of the private street. We were no longer going to be doing those maintenance or snow removal or something, I think about a year.
Well, because that street was not finished.
Right.
Letter of credit issued in timber court.
Yeah, that's a totally separate situation here.
You're right, it is. But I think you should just be aware of that, that, you know, there is some potential exposure you may have to the deterioration of the streets someone could attribute to the plowing of those streets. But if you are going to discontinue, if you're gonna continue, perhaps you secure a release of liability from the private homeowners who are serviced by that street in exchange for, the consideration would be that the city's willing to continue to plow those streets in exchange for which they're, you know, they execute that kind of release. And the alternative, if you are going to discontinue it, obviously out of fairness to those property owners to secure other services, you should provide them with sufficient notice so they can make alternate arrangements for snow removal.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I thought that you said that we were covered under state statute that we, they had to allow us access for police, fire, garbage, normal law, tasks that the city would perform.
That's true. We have the right to access it. The question, the concern I would have is the private property owners will say, well, yes, our streets are in the condition the street study indicated, streets efficiency study, but they're that way because of the city's conduct. We have access. We can go there. The police can go down there. Public Works can go down there. So we have the right to be on those streets, and we have the right to have our plows on those streets. But I only caution you that that could be a criticism that's made, that they'll say, well, the reason our streets are deteriorating is because of the plows or the conduct of the city.
All right, since they're talking snow Saturday, we'll continue to plow those streets, and we'll bring it back up. Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
So then there's really one question. Either we walk from doing anything there at all, or we incorporate the street into the city one way or the other, from a legal standpoint.
Mr. Pepon?
That is the absolute cleanest position to take.
Three, oh, three.
Same with you?
So I'm just gonna give notice that, you know, we're gonna continue these streets, or do the streets listed there plowing, that I'm gonna ask the board at Dominion if they want that street plowed, because we're not doing it today, and if they want it plowed by the city, it should be plowed as well. And then what should I do? Contact you, Mr. Murmurs, or Mr. Forrest, to make sure they're in the rotation?
Sir, you can contact me.
Go ahead. Jeff?
Just like to verify from the acting city services director, what, which of these streets we do actively plow right now. I don't believe we plow Cary Trail. I don't believe we plow the streets in the Tall Oaks Townhomes. So I think it's probably just Sunset and Homestead.
Right.
You know, again, of these privately owned streets, these are probably the two streets that just by default are probably substandard. It's, I have to refer back, I've been listening to the conversation here. I've been listening to what the city attorney said earlier about these private roads in these subdivisions. The developers put these in as private roads. They are, their substandard would probably only be in the width of them. I don't think the paving is substandard. They probably made them narrower because they didn't want to dedicate the sixty-six-foot right of way. So that would be the non-conformity. But again, they were put in as private roads. When people closed on their homes, they knew they were private roads. There's homeowners associations set up there. Part of the bylaws is that they have to maintain their private roads. So again, I just wanna clarify that to everybody.
Mr. Pepon?
I would caution you against expanding. If you're gonna continue to plow those streets that you've been historically plowing, you know, that's one thing. I would caution you from expanding that for the reasons that we talked about and the concerns that I have.
I'll move Roy Wesley.
Um...
Can we wrap this one up pretty quick?
Ethan Woods? I know those are our streets now, correct?
I believe.